Yeah, they do. That's exactly what I'm saying. And, uh...
Yeah, essentially, it is almost the same.
Yeah, they do. Per, in the...
Yes, can you show? Yeah. I'll take you to here.
I think they have a question.
I don't think they...
Yeah. I know. I know. We're calling you?
You have to go on to...
We're gonna call this meeting of the City Council Finance Meeting to order. Clark, could you please call the roll?
That's Councilwoman Hayes. Council Condon.
Yeah.
Council Crowe. Council Nenah. Speaker D'Arcy.
Yeah.
Council Windsor. Council McDonald.
Karen. And we have City Council President Mayhew for tomorrow. All right. Uh, welcome, friends. Um, I am Finance Chair, Council Karen McDonald. I'll be leading this evening's meeting, and so I just wanna give us a little bit of housekeeping to start. Uh, and we have to... The thing to read. All right, well, this is being livestreamed and will be recorded. Um, this is a public meeting, so we have, we do have folks joining online. Um, we're continuing to admit people who join the Teams meeting. We also want folks to know that, uh, here in City Council, Secured City Hall, where we're conducting the meeting, uh, we have overflow seating in, uh, the council chambers as it gets tight in this room. Um, and additionally, we have, uh, we are livestreaming via Malden Access TV. Welcome, councilors. We have TV. Um, we're livestreaming via Malden Access TV on YouTube. So, for those who are following along, that's actually what we're doing. We're streaming into the council chamber where we have streaming people to YouTube. So, folks can watch this on Malden Access TV. They can, they can join the Teams meeting, um, and they can also be here in person. Uh, so there's lots of ways to join this, and we will be posting the copy of this meeting after that. Um, this is a, uh, council committee meeting, which is to say it is not a public hearing. We're not taking public comment or testimony, but as it's a public meeting, of course, folks are very welcome to, um, observe. Uh, we have, in addition to our Finance Committee members, a number of other city councilors here with us, and we have a number of city staff who will be joining us, um, to answer questions and to talk through, uh, the situation as we have it. Um, and we also have our Mayor, Eric Christensen, here to join us. So, um, Clark, would you read the first order of business, and then we will get started?
Sure. First order of business, page 33-25. Staff members from various city departments will meet with the Finance Committee to discuss the show.
We've been able to meet that goal. Now, I know recycling is another, uh, issue, but our thought process all along is that we must have the trash removed, and I think they've, uh, been able to accomplish that goal. I also just wanna take a moment to really thank, uh, I see some residents here, as well as the community in general. Uh, they had patience and understanding throughout this sort of year. I also really have to compliment them, because it would have been very easy during this time just to get rid of everything as trash. But as our drop-off locations for recycling have shown, that is anything but the case. And that is a testament to them for recognizing that despite the challenge we face, they are willing, like us, to do what they can to help the cause, and they deserve a lot of credit. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but, uh, Mr. Knox at some point will be able to tell you, the recycling numbers during this time have exceeded what we thought they would be. So, again, that's a compliment to them. I would just end by, uh, before segueing over to our team, that, uh, it is imperative that we continue to work together, either by signing up for alerts at cityofmalden.org/trush or for daily updates, which, again, the team has been providing at cityofmalden.org/updates. Um, this is just something that we've never experienced before, and as a result, when you face these challenges, we have to work together. I'll give an example. There was a resident down on Witman Street who just took it upon herself to go door-to-door, um, and talk with people about where we are and where we're going. That's what this challenge takes. We can develop all the protocols we want to here, but you need people like her from Witman Street to be able to help us get to where we want to. So, with that being said, I would now just segue over to, uh, Mr. Hogan, who has prepared a presentation, uh, for you to receive.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, we're gonna go over to Ron Bogdan, our Chief Strategy Officer. Um, we have a PowerPoint that we're gonna share in this meeting. We'll attach that to the meeting minutes and the meeting record, and I think we have a limited number of print copies here in person. Uh, please let me know if you need one of those. All right, Ron, so, uh, Councilwoman Hayes.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I had walked in like a minute late. Did you already call? I just wanted to make it put on the record that I went in.
He captured your attendance, Councilwoman Hayes.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. And Council Windsor. Yes, totally. Thank you, Ron. And Council Crowe. So, I think we got the whole Finance Committee President in here. Okay. Uh, it's Ron, please.
Yeah, so I, I put together a deck of information, because it's, it's hard to talk about this topic without being holistic when question leads to another. So, I'm happy to walk through that. I sent it to the, the council early with the sort of option of you using it to guide questions you wanna throw out, or I can walk through it and, and let you all sort of ask questions as we get to each slide. I will say, towards the rest, because I like to be an optimist, um, today, the Teams and Republic are meeting right now as we speak, and tomorrow, for the first time in a long time, so that's at least, uh, you know, hope for some progress, um, you know, and with, uh, it comes to help the radiator, so I'm hoping that we get some update at some point in time, but, uh, we'll hope for that. So, did you want me, Councilor, just to kinda walk through?
Yeah. Ron, would you, would you spend about, like, no more than 10 minutes going through, uh, because I do want time for discussion, but I think it's good to, um, as we set off the set and make sure we're working on the same basic information here.
Yeah, so, so I'm gonna assume some of these slides will sit as more background content information for folks that just wanna get a holistic view, but I'd just kinda start with, uh, a profile of Malden and what a typical trash and recycling is involved in, you know, quantities of, of tonnage and, and pickup. But, but generally speaking, it's important to know that, you know, we've got on a typical day, um, you know, three, we've got three trucks and two, uh, three truck servicing trash, two servicing recycling on a typical day. Those are, those are handling pickups at, at all the different curbsides, as well as pickups at the dumps, at the barrels at the school, at the, uh, the downtown, uh, at the parks, as well as the dumpsters at the school. So, that's kind of a typical full, full service. It's gonna be important as we talk about some of what we've had going on with the replacement crews to sort of understand what the norm is, how we're not that far off the norm from the vehicle perspective, but why we've also not been able to deliver at the same service level. So, again, that, that's as much for, for background information as anything. I did provide just a, a strike overview timeline, just to go...
I can...
It's helpful to, to kinda see what's, what's happened, when. Again, more of the background information for the public and anybody else that, that may wanna follow along with that. Um, I think everybody knows the most recent thing that happened that was probably most impactful to our residents. As the mayor had said, we, we have been, and I believe we will continue to stay on target for trash pickup. Uh, for most days, we need three trucks doing trash to keep up. Uh, Wednesdays are a bit of a heavy day, and sometimes we need help from a court. The, the good news is that the trash crews have been doing those routes to the point that they're operating at almost the same efficiency in terms of picking up trash as the, um, the, the normal crews that we have. So, three trucks are kinda keeping up on trash. We did, last week, uh, let folks know that we're pausing curbside recycling. The reason was that the fourth truck, so, so we really wanted to have five trucks on a consistent basis to continue with curbside recycling. That way, we're gonna have two doing curbside recycling, which even though that's what we normally have pre-strike, it wasn't enough to finish a route, just given the nature of some of the other dynamics, but it was enough to make significant progress. What happened recently was, we were down to four trucks, and some days, we needed to get the fourth truck, because it was needed on trash. And so, we were, we were setting the expectation with residents that we were picking up curbside recycling while not making enough progress to not have it be frustrating. So, we, we made the call after talking with Republic about what they saw coming in our near future, to pause curbside recycling so that we didn't continue to have folks put stuff at the curb that might sit there for two, three, four weeks at a time. So, obviously, the hope is that that can change soon, but as the mayor mentioned, uh, between yesterday, uh, between Tuesday and Thursday at our two, uh, drop-off locations, and we'll talk a little bit about the challenges there, we did have 20, that's 20 full dumpsters of recycling, you know, brought down by us. So, as the mayor said, that's a lot of material not going to the backlit trash truck, you know, not being treated as trash by having, you know, by having those drop-off options. So, so folks are really doing a, you know, fantastic job of, of bringing those down where they have the option to. So, um, I, you know, I mentioned earlier that, that, you know, you know we're doing Middlesex Street now. It wasn't our first choice, it wasn't our second choice, it probably wasn't our 10th choice. We went through a lot of different sites. Ferryway School was one that wasn't picked without a lot of forethought. It was a, in a lot of ways, an ideal location geographically, as well as for traffic circulation. I think you all saw what happened when we tried to do it at the DPW for a period of time, uh, where just the logistics, the road is set up, didn't allow us to, to have it be done seamlessly, so we went back to Ferryway. And with the, uh, with the reopening of the schools, we, we lost some of our bigger parking lots. So, as we were talking through with the concept of Middlesex Street being an underutilized street came up, and, um, I think Director Knox made some adjustments today where their dumpsters are lined up on both sides, and I would say it's gone pretty smoothly. I think you get from folks that, you know, there haven't been long lines of backup, and, um, DPW crews doing a great job, you know, unloading cars and trying to help folks not have to, kind of a frictionless process. We really don't have the option of doing that across multiple sites for a variety of reasons. One is, it's resource-intensive. We need dumpsters, but frankly, it's already a huge task to try to get the dumpsters here, get them unloaded, and then get them back in time for the next time that we're doing drop-off recycling. So, the company we're getting them from, which is not Republic, does not have a single another dumpster to get to us. In fact, we're lucky we locked up the ones that we did early on, because we hadn't, we wouldn't be able to get anything now. So, so between dumpster limitations, uh, the challenges just with the DPW staffing it, sites that allow that type of vehicle traffic and circulation, um, and where frankly, every one of the sites would need a front-end loader, because that's how we assist the residents generally, you know, have them loading up a front-end loader, and then the DPW crew is dropping it into the dumpster. So, we just don't have that to be able to repeat across a half a dozen different sites, quite frankly. And that's why we, you know, we continue to focus on one, but we will tell you in a minute about something that we are going to do that is, um, we think will help, by, by trying to find, I think, a balance and try to get some, some focus in there. So, um, and as I mentioned, just on the, the weekend limitations, you know, like you said, why not on Sunday? The last time that something could be dropped, to be dropped off from recycling is noon time on Saturday. Anything that's loaded after that, you know, is being held onto, and it's limited places that, you know, we'll, we'll hold on to that. So, we just, we have to try to time and, and arrange what we do based upon those limitations.
Uh, did you have a question, Councilor?
I do. I just want, I, I know you, you might buy, but I think it's good for the public, because I asked you this. Can you just talk about quick, quickly, and I don't wanna spend a lot of time on, why we don't have trucks on Saturdays picking up sometimes? Not because we don't have trucks, it's because DOT limitations.
Yeah, the general public kinda stands that.
Yeah.
The timing, how it works.
Yeah, no, it's a great question.
It's frustrating for everybody, right? Well, particularly because when we restarted curbside recycling after having not done it for the first several weeks of strike, we did it with the, with the thought, and only having talked to Republic with the thought that we could get to that five trucks consistently. Remember, we stopped, restarted it on a Friday. The next Saturday, we went eight trucks at all. You know, Bobby and I laughed. We literally went, "We're gonna be ending the drop-off, and pretty soon Bobby's trying to plan to sell them." Right? That was the last Saturday that we had trucks. Part of what happens is that the drivers are limited on how many hours they can do. DOT limitations. The moment they get in and they clock in, those hours are being counted. And doesn't matter whether they're not around streets picking up recycling from the moment of the truck's shift is being counted. What's happening is, between various delays that are getting out on the road and, and they get back to the dump, they can wait two hours in line at the dump to, to drop off, or that two hours counts. So, after that first Saturday, by the time Saturday rolls around, you know, Bobby and I have a conversation with them, and they're saying, "No one's got any hours left." And so, that's why a day where otherwise would be available just isn't, because the folks that they have have used all their hours, and they can't exceed, yeah, a considerable amount of DOT. So, we hope Saturday would be a time for us to play catch-up, and it just hasn't worked that way. So, we, we are, um, taking, we have grown to great lengths to, to try to communicate, and I think, I think everybody's seen, and I know it, so it gets to be a lot every day, but we, we do post comprehensively on Facebook every day.
Um, before we...
Do you have a question, Councilwoman Hayes?
Yes, thank you. Um, before we move past the question about the weekends, I just had a quick question. I also, um, want to let people here know I have to leave. I have a hard stop. It was only reorganized, so I just wanted to ask you this. Sorry for interrupting, but, um, weekends, um, is there any way to stagger the hours so that some of the drivers are not going during the week and then use them on the weekends?
So, we, so we'd just be robbing Peter to pay Paul in that regard. So, we'd lose the trash pickup on that day, right? So, right now, all the hours are written up by picking up trash, and so all we'd be doing is, we wouldn't be able to pick up recycling, we would just be off a day with trash. So, if we didn't have somebody work on a Tuesday, we wouldn't finish trash on a Tuesday, and we'd be using Saturday to pick up the trash on a Saturday. So, it's not gonna get us anything, it's just gonna...
I just meant for convenience for the, um, um, just thinking about people who are, um, I've heard that, look, work, and can't get there, um, on the weekends, so please talk about the trash. Keep looking at the trash and the recycling.
Oh, we can talk about drop-off recycling, yeah. So, so we have the Saturday open for recycling. I'm gonna talk in a minute about one more thing we think we're gonna be able to do that will help a little bit in that regard. But the problem with Sunday recycling is, there's no place to bring it. And so, we can't, anything after noon time on Saturday, we're stuck, we're holding on to it until Monday as it is, and the dumpsters are full, and then we're just kinda waiting to be able to get the drop down.
Oh, thank you.
So, I gotta start to mention, we are doing, um, daily Facebook posts. Uh, you know, Bobby and his team are responding highly to a ton of secret fix options. We, we do use probably one of the best tools that we have, and we're trying to promote it, which is our Trash, Trash Alert site, where it's, where you put in your address, and we're gonna send you a specific notice about what's going on for your collection. So, it's the most targeted thing that we do, where we're customizing messages and sending our custom messages every day to the Tuesday trash room and the Wednesday trash room, or, or things like that. So, we have, we're trying to encourage people. We do send out about 2,500, 3,000 alerts for each day that we do that, so we do have a lot of folks engaged, but the more, the better, because that is truly coming to your phone and telling you the day before your trash day, "Put out your trash, but please don't put out your recycling," and kinda cares what the options are. So, um, we encourage people to use that, and the website. I mentioned, um, you know, we use Code Red Alerts, which is really a non-targeted citywide where we go out to not only people that have signed up, but anybody who we've got a phone number from the database that we, we basically purchase access to, right? So, it's a little bit of a shotgun approach. You know, we get the phone call every now and then, where somebody says, "I live in Texas, and I moved out of Malden 18 years ago, and I got your trash message," and we say, "Okay." It's a little bit of the nature of these databases, but I guess to a, I guess to a lot of people, but we try to use them when major things are happening. Pausing recycling, we're restarting recycling. So, the day-to-day updates, we're using the targeted messages, and we're using, we're saving some of the, some of the things like that to be able to really get out to the larger groups of folks with more, more important messages, so...
Uh, just very quickly, uh, if you, if folks need to sign up for the text alerts, they just go to cityofmalden.org/connect, right?
Yeah, you can go there, you can go to Trash. There's a, there's a few different ways to get to the same place, and you can sign up for the Trash Alerts, you can sign up for the Code Red, you can kinda sign up for the Street Sweeping Alert, you can pick kinda what you wanna be told.
Are they different languages?
They can pick their language, yeah. So, it's a great question. When they sign up, they choose, and whatever we send out gets sent to them in the language that they, that they choose. And of course, I'm glad to cover that. Facebook, of course, folks that are on Facebook that are non-English language speakers typically have their Facebook settings to be in the native languages, the Code Red, so everything that we're talking about, that we just talked about, Google Translate on our web, cares already through technology to the different languages. So, so that part is covered from here. I think there's more that we can do with some other areas, but relative to the things that we're using here, it's all built to sort of work with, uh, folks that are non-English speakers, so...
Okay. Council Windsor and Council President?
Yeah, no, I, I definitely had the Language Access question.
Great. Council President?
The two things, one is, are we, are we getting effect that we use Language Access Team that we have in-house, and then also, have we reached out to Access, uh, keep on going, Malden Access TV? UMA to help, uh, spread the message that way?
Yeah, so, so I think we can do more in both, and I think we're working on doing more than we're behind. We, that was, we, I reached out to UMA last week and, and, you know, shared with them that I think they can and should be doing more to be an active part of this, and I think them streaming this meeting tonight is kind of a part of that reach out, and I think that, like, the mayor and the mayor are having conversations with the Language Access function to try to get that to be more actively involved. We need to be reaching out to those neighborhoods where we know...
With a native knowledge.
Yeah, that's right, and we need to do it. So, so these tools that we use are all great, and they engage a lot of people, but if you're not connected with us, I mean...
You're not getting the message, that's my point.
We need to use the resources that we have, which allows us to be filmed, to do more to get out to them. So, I think we're doing a great job on this front, but we need to do more in that regard.
Yeah, I think back when I used to make fun of Ron and Clark, we used to go and do the videos, right? How to shovel aside, what, how to deal trash, but I think that we can do it with Language Access.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, one of the questions, I know that gets asked a lot, is like, why can't we just hire somebody to commit temporarily, like, help with recycling, right? And, and so the reality is that the, the other companies that are involved in this business that have the type of scale you would need to be able to, you know, temporarily put, you know, vehicles and folks on to be able to do this, quite frankly, they're not stepping in the middle of the street. You know, I've spoken to some of the owners of some of these companies, and they're just honest with you about that. They're just saying, "Look, we're not," you know, most of them are union companies, some of them the same union, and, and so they're not, they're not willing, and they're not just interested in sort of inserting themselves into the middle of the street. So, that's, that's the reality. Um, there are some smaller firms. I know Councilwoman Hayes, you had, you know, you had provided one that was willing to pick up Ron's dumpsters. You know, they tend to be, uh, like, in that case, it's a non-union firm that's probably going to create some challenges in that regard also, and so our challenge is not that type of stuff, it's getting somebody to pick up the curbside recycling, and nobody with the skill to be able to do that has, has stepped up. And again, the companies that tend to have it are folks that just aren't going to, Capital Waste and Star, local 25, you know, folks, you know, Waste Management, they're all union companies that just aren't going to, to insert themselves into the middle of it. So, it does leave limited options in, in that regard. Um, I did mention one thing we're gonna do starting tomorrow, uh, calls will be going out soon, uh, we're gonna be attempting sort of what we're calling a rotating recycling drop-off option. What we've asked Republic to do is give us one truck and two folks. Now, what we know is when they're driving around, they don't cover a lot, because it just takes them a while. We're gonna park them. So, tomorrow, they're gonna be in the Linden School, school's out. They're gonna be there for eight hours with the two helpers, and we're announcing to folks in those two areas, over in the Wood 6, Wood 8 area, that, they bring their recycling over there, that, that'll be sort of a, a place closer to that side of the city, and we're gonna try to attempt to, so we don't need, it's not as difficult to pull up, we don't need as much space. Bobby doesn't need half a dozen staff people, and yet, when the truck is full, it leaves, right? So, one truck can hold about the equivalent of six dumpsters worth of recycling. So, it's a, it's a lot of capacity, so we think, we're, we're telling people nine to five, or until the truck loads out, which means it's, John's talking to him, until it's full, right? As it drives away, I'm just confusing it. But, um, so we're hoping that that will just provide a little bit of relief from folks that have been driving across the city, because the locations have tended to be, you know, geared a little bit more towards the side of the city. So, stay tuned as we try to find, um, additional sites, but we think we'll be able to, again, it's a little bit less logistics-heavy to be able to find them, and we are putting out that alert to the folks that are on the Tuesday and Wednesday, right? Tuesday, Wednesday routes, and the folks that are in that area, and so that's who we're targeting. We're not gonna turn anybody away that shows up from another part of the city, but if we, if we kinda keep it targeted towards the geographic area or in general, we think we'll be able to ensure that we never run out of it. So, we're hoping that, that, um, that'll help provide a little bit of relief for folks.
Great, and, and Council President? If, I know that they have no school tomorrow, so they're doing it at Linden, so is there an option to do it maybe on a weekend in some of the other schools when schools not there?
Maybe, again, Saturday is a bit of a challenge, because they have no place to bring it, right?
Yeah, true.
So, the amount of hours.
They have the hours, but the council gets them with the hours. They're only limited to 60 hours. Right. We dealt with last Friday on trash, as Lon was saying, that, you know, we get the list every morning of how many trucks, and, and two of the drivers, one had four and a half hours, and one had five and a half, but we talked, and we were concerned that maybe they wouldn't finish the trash. And the clock starts ticking as soon as they get to the yacht.
Exactly.
They may have to wait two hours to get out of the yacht, to get here, so that four-and-a-half-hour truck, they only be on the Malden streets for an hour. So, it isn't really very much for the limitation of eight hours.
I was just thinking about, again, doing, like, different times and spaces.
We're pushing them, Council, to try to get another, like, to try to say, "That's all well and good, but we've come up with a, we think a pretty good way to handle this." You know, "Get me somebody else in some other location," because we think it'll, you know, sort of deal with the, the challenges of, I mean, Middlesex is doing great, but it's a lot of work, you know?
Even leaving the people.
Yeah. I just, just to piggyback on that, um, before we leave, there are a second point. I think residents have been very, very understanding and graceful and appreciative of the Middlesex site. Like, I went over there today, I thought it was very easy to use. It's a little, it's a little tall, I will say, but like, you know, I, a tall person, my family, it was very helpful. Um, but it, what I'm hearing from folks is that if you don't have a car, a central location is still tough. You've gotta find someone who can lend you a car or carpool with you. So, I, I get, people are very, very nice about it, but the ask is, like, if we can have a rotating place that folks who need to walk it over or wagon it over, they're willing to save it up for a bit, but to be able to get it without having to arrange for a car is, is kind of the main thing that people are asking me now, if we can. And I understand that it's hard.
Yeah, I think, so right now, we've, Bobby and I are working on a list of sites, and then trying to figure out which ones are realistic to be able to do, and the more that we can do, the more chance we're closing to somebody that, like, to your point, Council, doesn't have a, you know, a vehicle. So, we're hoping that, that what I'm calling the mobile, you know, drop-off option will provide that. And in that case, no one's having to lift anything, because, so what's gonna happen is, they're not gonna be allowed within 10 feet of the back of a Packer. They're gonna get out, and then the helper from Republic is gonna take it and dump it in the back, and then put it back, and they'll, so it will definitely be a little bit more resident-friendly than the, the dumpster piece for, you know. I hope it can be touched with. So any other questions on?
Can we move on to enforcement? Do we have other questions about? I mean, we'll come back to discussions, but any other questions about recycling right now?
So from an enforcement perspective, we've all seen there's been an uptick in, in sort of non-compliance. It's what I call the wine or a poetry. I have some folks that, you know, have just put some things out that they just have said, well, you know, the streets are kind of a mess right now, so if I just put this couch in bed frame out there, somebody will kind of figure it out. Right? And I think that that's been some of what we've seen. You know, it's a little bit of human nature, a little bit, a little bit unfortunate. You know, enforcement for this primarily right now happens from DPW staff. You know, full disclosure, there's been challenges because a very key resource has been out injured and kind of worked through the, the resolution of that. But it's always a little bit of a challenge when you have a key person out. The focus is on that kind of dumping versus what I'll call absolute compliance with things like, my recycle barrel is still out and we've told you that that's paused. I know that folks, we'd all like to see that pulled back off of the curb. It's just a tougher thing to get done, you know, citywide with, with the resources that are out there. So I think right now the focus is definitely more on trying to get some of the legal dumping off of the curb and, and some of the, the bigger issues that we could have one of the major would be something that.
Yeah, we made it, made it. I'm building that is 20 units. We're getting the calls and the requests into secret fix. So with what we have to staff, the majority of our staff on a day like today is all utilized on some portion of trash, whether it's emptying the pile barrels for trash. We had four people over there at the drop off, a loader. So a lot of the staff is dedicated to that, but we are monitoring secret fixes, which I'm sure you all see. And anything that comes on that's a dump, we're trying to address as many issues as we possibly can. And we see the ones with the barrels in the certain areas that are leaving them out. And we go put a warning violation on it, we'll put it back off the street, but there's just an abundance of those spots that, you know, you take one off, two more come on. So we're, we're kind of reacting to those secret fix requests.
Uh, Council Bedford and then Council.
Yeah, so, so this is one of the reasons too, I wanted to have this meeting for, for a host of, you know, one of the top reasons because, you know, myself and Bobby and the mayor met probably six months ago, Bobby maybe seven months ago, pre-strike, because I was noticing, uh, what I would say, uh, traction force lacking in certain neighborhoods and they were just taking advantage of it. And I don't think anybody here is saying, you leave your barrel out because it's going on the street. We're actually upset about that. I think that's realistic. I think what we're seeing now is just people continue to pile up recycling next to a barrel, knowing it's, it's, it might not be picked up and it's blowing out. And I've called Bobby probably half a dozen times the last two weeks and his tires and his mattress, things that should never be picked up, but they're taken advantage of. And what I discovered in that meeting with the mayor of Bobby, because I was noticing that was the gentleman, I don't want to say his name, but Bobby doesn't have anybody right now who picks it up, right? I don't think the man gave me, he's, he's, the gentleman's been working on for a couple of years. So there's nobody pre-strike, that might post-strike, writing tickets and orders, right? Now, is there a good time to start in, in this, right? It's kind of like a pandemic, but the same token is we're out, we're out, we have, you know, no muscle memory here and I think people need to be reeducated. So one of the things that I want to see happen is that role filled, that, that gentleman who's out, that role filled, because I think the city this size needs somebody. It's like we need pocket enforcement when you're out street sweeping ahead of the trash trucks, friendly notices, a lot of communities have got to dump packs with different violations, notifying them in their language, being nice, and then if it doesn't happen, we're going to find you, handle it, pick up if you put a tire out and then charge it back. And some of the houses, not all of them, but we've seen our like absentee landlords and it is this. So I see this systemic problem that's being enhanced now and that's why shortly we found out we didn't have anybody to do it. We just need to get that role filled. That's, we need to fill that regardless of strike. And that's one of the things I think, I did know that, I would maybe at the time that the gentleman was still out. Unfortunately, he's still out, but I think we need to fill that role as soon as possible. That is very, a city this size cannot have something like a trash.
Again, anyone would disagree with?
Yeah.
Uh, Council Conneage?
Thank you. So the, the question about can we fill that up, up, that position like ASAP or do we have to do something that, I, I didn't know that either. That just threw me, I'm sorry, I had a question and it just was like, what? Um, and that's, I wasn't calling Bob, I, we've called up a lot, I know, thank you for, um, you know, picking up all the time. But we're, I was thinking that the people who left their trash or their recycling out on the streets, and there's been a lot of them, we weren't calling you, like the, the thought was that they were going to come out and pick it up on their own, even though we know that's probably not going to happen. But there are some streets that I've been passing by and trying to talk to folks. I can actually call you and say, can you, seems a little unfair because other people probably came out and took the trash. I mean, they're recycling off the streets, but is that what I just heard?
Well, yeah, we don't have, we don't have the staff to go street.
Yeah, I know.
Like Banebridge Street is one that came on there.
Yeah.
I mean, I know, being honest, have the staff, someone to walk Banebridge and talk to every guy. But there's a.
There's a big, there's a big.
Yeah, oh, these were tires, Council.
Yeah.
And mattresses.
I have a mattress too.
Nobody was.
Just hold on, hold on.
I'm sorry. I want to be clear, it was trash and he stopped that.
I see what you're saying, yeah. Um, one on where I, I told you two, there was a mattress, that's why, there is a mattress there. And I, I do think it's, it's not fair for people who do the right thing with the mattress. So I wasn't sure what to do about that, aside from, yeah.
Well, the mattress thing is something, in my opinion, a little sub, because we've dealt with that. Since they put this whole thing into effect, having to pay for mattresses, not taking them in the regular waste stream. So the unfortunate thing is we do find those all over. If, if that is the case and you see one, we'll investigate it, put it on secret fix. We go to the property, we'll leave a notice. If it comes from there, majority of the time we hear that it didn't come from that address and we resolve the issue. But again, it's, it's from being on secret fix that we, that we know what it was. And then we would address it. So if there's something on there tonight, I go through it, we leave, then I can, we want to be welcome. Check it out.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so the only other thing I'd add on this piece, and this is just a recommendation for you all, again, for to get back to looking at everyone, it's, it's to amend this piece to allow, or not only a fine, but for a cost for disposals that we can immediately take it off the street. It's fine to leave a ticket, but sometimes that ticket doesn't solve the cost, right? The trash goes, so it would be more effective, it's a ticket and an extra amount. And then the stuff gets removed by a third party contractor and we're basically passing the cost. Whether it's the first one, the second one, the third one.
Council Man, your first.
I just wanted to put a plus one on that. I can particularly, you know, none of us thought we were going to be in this boat when school reopened, obviously, but I know Counselor Bedford stepped out of the room, but living, living in D down near the school with all of the stuff, with the apartments around D, it's unreal down there trying to have kids get dropped off. And there's just wall to wall trash that's been out for months. And then you see people, they see the trash has been sitting there and it's like open season for people to just add to it because it's right, it's like it reinforces that nothing's getting done. Um, and again, nobody knew that this enforcement position was making. Um, or, I mean, there was a, you know, workings comp issue, but I think people see, oh, there's this stuff that's been sitting there. I'll, what harm is it if I dump one more thing? I saw people doing it this morning. It's like they walk up with their own bag and dump it and walk away. And then you see kids like they can't even get out of the car because the whole sidewalk is lined. So my point is like, we, if we can remove it and then find people, I think that's what we need to be doing at this point. It's just getting rid of it. So we have that paper on the docket too, sir, though, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so moving on to rodent control, just to, to cover this quick, because I know it's a key topic on this, in this area, but rodent control citywide is a joint effort between our health department facilities. We've got two companies that are on the contract that provide different services, GBS and, and one, one test. Um, and it's really a combination of, you know, quote unquote, smart boxes, right? The ones I think you're all aware of that, that are, that are monitored and provide notification and they, they, they get emptied for the, for the contents, nicer way to put that. And then traditional, you know, bait boxes that are, that are located in a combination of sort of inside and outside areas across the city, you know, schools and dumpster areas, bike path and, and then, you know, sort of various areas that the health department has identified as being problem areas. Obviously the smart box is a lot for a little bit more information gathering as opposed to traditional bait station. That's just, you know, it is what it is. It's a, it's a bait to go. We have asked for an, an additional quote to increase the smart boxes. They're expensive, right? They're expensive because they require monitoring and an, and an emptying on a regular basis. So, you know, each one probably at the end of the day costs you, you know, 1,200 bucks a year, right? So if you do, you know, 40 of them, you're 50, some a thousand dollars a year. So they're not cheap. Uh, we have 40 of them out there and, and we're looking at, you know, maybe doing more to supplement the traditional ones. But I would say on this front, you know, any request should go through the health department and then Laura, who's done an excellent job getting around to around this, can coordinate, you know, whether or not it's something that's more under the facility's purview or in the, in the public way.
Yeah, Council O'Malley.
Um, thank you for that. I really appreciate it. And I appreciate the work that the administration did revocating the proposal from Pine Banks to Middlesex Street. One of the concerns that I had was the fact that you'd have to do rodent control in like a forest preserve. And I was just concerned about the unintended impact to get out of wildlife. So I appreciate the hard work you did there. Have, has the, has the electric rodent boxes, has that company been responsive? Um, like in terms of coming out and actually engaging them? I always thought that they were, and then recently I heard some feedback that maybe they weren't picking them up as frequently as they should be. And I think that we're spending like 1,200 bucks, they should be coming out when, when they need to either have the bag replaced or the, what did you say, contain, uh?
Right, yeah.
Content.
The contents.
So do you know?
Yeah, no, Laura, I mean, I spoke to Laura, you know, a couple of times earlier today. I don't think she's had any issues, issues there. So I think they were able to monitor the, the, the content capacity is about five to seven units. And so they're, they're aware of sort of when they need to come out and empty out because we've reached the unit capacity.
Thanks.
I think I would say things, Council O'Malley, as certain some of them have happened. But they're not, but, but not recently right now, so much love.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Maybe they don't have, they're not to capacity.
Yeah, and I, you know, there's probably a little bit of a, you know, maybe a little bit of a gap in between. We had a bit of a, a time when we didn't have anyone at the, you know, heading for the apartment, but I know that Laura is very actively engaged and involved on this. So I, I think whatever that might have been, might have been a shared thing from being candid. So I think we're probably.
Okay, Council Windsor.
Yeah, no, that was, I had talked to Laura that there was a big gap between some contract, contracted services. So there may have been a gap in the service and stuff. So she, she has the contract signed, it's being executed. So it seems like it's back to how it was.
Um, can I just make a quick say? Council Bedford, yes?
I would also just say real quick, this ties back to enforcement, right? Not just because right now the way it works, DPW has on street, what I have that's off street. So rats don't care if it's on street or off street. And I actually had a pleasant encounter with Nelson Tuesday, did a ride along. Yes, I did ask for a badge. I wanted to be, I wanted to be deputized. We went to a couple of streets on Franklin Street, I think the mayor was involved in emails and rats, right? But you know what it was? It was trash and yachts. So this is, it, it, this is, I think, the whole thing with enforcement. I think some of the ordinance cleanup, allowing all the departments to go out there and use everything. These are not new ordinance, it's just allow them to use the tools that we've got out there to enforce our rules. Again, it's a little different now with the strike, but I think to everybody's point, you know, the people doing the right thing should not be affected by the people not doing the right thing. And unfortunately it's not just trash now, we've got rodents kind of taking over. So I'm hoping the enforcement gets, the message gets reinforced a few times here on, on everything. Thank you.
It sounds very well received. Um, I know, like I've seen, I've talked to Galvin Murphy, you know, from Yankee Pest Control, who is kind of put out there that like he would be doing free baiting for like drop off locations. Can we explode them at all?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think one of the things that someone's got to figure out is it, is it in conflict with the contract that we are under with somebody that bid it through procurement process and this, you know what I mean? So I, I don't know if anybody, I think that that's probably the thing that has to be looked at, right? Probably not my area.
I, okay, so hold on, I see Counselor Conneage next, then Counselor Windsor, are you next, Counselor? Okay, Counselor Conneage, then Counselor Windsor.
Yeah, no, thank you for bringing that up. I, I did make some connections with some firms to pass them over because there was a question. I was sure there was going to be an issue with contracts and, and being able to bid out. So hopefully, I'm sure you're all super busy, but if somebody could look into that, just to even help, it just feels like doing anything in addition to, to help out with this would be great. So Yankee Pest Control has been talking about that in public, so people have heard it. So we will see, just look into it.
Uh, I'm sorry, Counselor, are you, are you done?
Yes.
Counselor Windsor?
Yeah, just a quick thing, because I, I have been touching base with the health director last second about updating our rodent control ordinance too. So that's something that, you know, we're going to be working on that side of the context of this. She, I gave her a copy of Summerbush, which was pretty much more aggressive than ours.
Yeah.
So it's something that'll be, you need to look around the fall.
Um, so if I may, from, from, yeah, so just from the chair on this, I've also been in touch with the health director on this and, and I think that we need to prioritize getting more of these smart traps out there in some of these hospital locations. And if we have people who are not paying, you know, if we are, if we're, if we're charging people who are not disposing of their dumping for the cost of disposal, I would charge them for a smart trap too, to address the rodent control issue that that kind of non-compliance can, can create. So I also just want to note, you know, I consistently hear concerns from our residents that if we're doing, especially in like, you know, public areas, wooded areas, adding more rat bait that's poison will harm, you know, other animals. Have we looked at, have we looked at the rat birth control option and have we tried that? I, I was, it came up when we were talking about this last year or the year before and I just, I wasn't clear whether that's something that we've tried and if someone sees something like that. You don't need a prescription, Ron.
What's that?
I said you don't need a prescription.
Can I say one point with that, Counselor?
Yeah, go ahead.
So if our current trash ordinance, any, any more than three units, you're supposed to have rat control. You're supposed to have rodent control. I never knew that. I don't think a lot of people in the zoom know that. I don't even know if our current health department, it's in there. I know for enforcing it. So my point is three or more units, you should have to have.
I thought we just put that, that was in.
Oh, I started the city meeting up because that's a bit of a bias. I'll, I'll confirm, but.
Okay, I see, I see.
Related to your, to the, to the rat birth control. Um, the, I don't know if it's still out there, but the MBTA did have a grant for cities to implement this. It's a new bait that basically just doesn't kill them, it just makes them invulnerable. Um, and the reason being is they reproduce so rapidly that it has an effect. It doesn't, you don't stop killing them, but you just also stop them from reproducing.
Yes, well, well, plug the leak as it were. Can I just ask, do we know if this has been something that the city has evaluated?
I think we have to find out from it.
Yeah. Okay, I'd like to ask that you look into this and let us know what you find. Great, thank you. More questions about rodent control at this stage? Okay, great, contractual challenge.
Yes, let me hit on a few more things that have come up in the course of dialogue, right? Because a lot of the things that I've tried to put together here were things that have been in the public forums and, and so I figured it'd be a good place to address it here. But, but from a contract perspective, you know, our contract has language within the force to drill clause that, that basically limits their liability and it doesn't include failure to perform due to a strike. I know that's, that's frustrating, but I'll also say it's not that uncommon, right? So that's extended in their contract, but theirs kind of their contract. So I don't think it's something that, I mean, certainly it's something I think we'll be more aware of next time. I don't know whether or not you'll find companies willing to, to insulate you from something, but, you know, I know that that's been a source of frustration, but that's what we have and it's fairly, fairly common. So, um, just on that front, you know, we have a contract, a 20-year contract signed in 2011. Uh, 2021, we had a one-time option to go look at the market and see if there was anybody who would do the same thing for less. And if there was, we could go back to JRM and say, you can even match this or you can walk away. We, we knew quite frankly at the time, just based on what the market was, that there was nobody. So I know there's been some speculation that we had an opportunity and that we extended the contract. That's not correct. We didn't, you know, we simply had one option if we thought that we could get it priced cheaper and, and see if they, you know, were willing to match it. You know, with the absence of that, it basically just converted to the second year of, second 10 years of the contract. We, we did work to amend the contract. Again, it required two parties to agree to it because, you know, we had no leverage to add single stream option and, and the barrel option. So that was to give our residents the opportunity to get rid of the bins, which were again, were in the contract to have covered toters and to not separate to recycling. And so we came to a, a mutual price tag for that in 2021 and did not add the contract in terms of any years. It just amended those sections that explicitly called out. So for example, from JRM's perspective, they wanted the bag on the ground, not in a barrel, because it's trash, they never picked up the bag and tore it to the back of the truck. So the contract was specifically written that way for efficiency. And, and this was to amend it to try to give us some of the flexibility that we wanted at the time, even if it wasn't a, a blank slate. We did, we did keep recycling tonnage at zero cost, but we added some, some costs in order to have them to pick up the barrels instead of the toters. So, um, and yeah, just a little section here that, that ties back to that part of the contract, so.
Yeah, I see you've got some questions, Councilman, then Councilman.
Thank you, um, just to go back, um, reading off here, so amended in 2021, I want to make sure I heard this right. The original term remained. Was that because, did you say we weren't allowed to discuss anything aside from the single stream option? Or just the original term remained, we were only looking at it? Like, could we look at something else?
Okay, we, we could have asked them to renegotiate the whole thing and they could have said no, right? So at the end of the day, the part that we were trying to deal with was the recycling piece. We didn't have the right to break the contract, we had no basis for it, no right to walk away. So what we tried to do was to come up to some terms on the single stream piece, because that's the part that was in the, you know, the greatest source of frustration for our residents. It's, it's easy to forget, at the time it was the open aired bins where one windstorm and they were all over the street, right? So, so the goal was to, to deal with that. Uh, and that's what, that's what they were willing to have a conversation with us on.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman.
Yeah, um, so on the contractual challenge, just case, it mentions that, um, we have to provide them 30 days if they are in material, like breach of the contract. Have we provided them with notice that they are in breach of the contract? Just in case we do want to, after doing engagement, pull the trigger on our pay? Or are we leaning back on the July 17 lawsuit to say that we've notified them of their, their breach?
Yeah, so, and I know legals, legals here, I, I think, um, you know, whether or not saying that they're in breach of the contract is in conflict with the fact that they can't be held liable for failure to perform due to a strike. You know, certainly from, from their perspective, you know, that would make them not breach of the contract because the language specifically says like, that doesn't count, you know?
Because, because my understanding is that they can't be held accountable, like being like, we can't charge them for the costs that we are incurring for picking up the trash because they're not picking up the trash or recycling. But they also can't hold us accountable for the actions that we're taking because they're, they're struggling. It's, it's mutual.
Yeah, so, so, but I think notifying somebody that they're in breach of the contract, you know, and again, certainly from, from a legal perspective, but is, is certainly one way of holding them liable for the strike, right? You're saying, I'm, I'm holding you liable by notifying you that you're, you're, you're in breach of the contract. So I, I mean, certainly somebody that knows more legal, but I think that generally that's what the cities around us have, I think kind of viewed it that way also, because I think that's why you see, we went down the lawsuit path as opposed to, to that path. Because it's not great language, right? Because the two are a little bit at odds with each other, but that's, you know.
Yeah, we did discuss that with the other mayors, yes, yeah. And decided that was not a viable path. We don't, and we still think that. Because it's not a lock, they had locked out the employees, different story. But where it's a voluntary strike, we think, uh, that would be a loser. Understood, yeah, I mean, I'm just trying to think about, at least giving us the options, you know, we, um, only because it does say like, except for the obligation to pay for services rendered. So that, you know. Yeah, I think again, our focus right now is just trying to stay comfortable with the trash. Um, try to figure out something about the recycling and then the costs and everything else that's been incurred. We're going to start to deal with that next week. Okay, but we just don't want to add to that right now with the focus being just trying to hang in there during this, during the strike.
Are you done, Councilman? Okay, Councilwoman.
I, uh, Mayor, um, I, I just wondered if you could share a little bit about how many other mayors or you didn't discuss, you know, that had a little contact with Mayor Berga and Foster, um, in, in City. A little context, um, it's helpful, I think, for the council and maybe people watching, uh, how many other communities are, are, are impacted by the strike? And, um, I mean, is, is there any sense from your discussion, is there any collective action?
Uh, there's 10 to 12 other communities that we've met 12 times since July 1st. We were averaging one or two a week early on. But now that, um, you know, some of the avenues we worked soon have not been out, I think we're all now trying to figure out what to do crosswise now that the July invoice is coming in, you know, and it's not accounting law. So that's been a lot of our focus. But, um, the other cities in town are in a similar position as ours. Um, some are a little bit better because they have their own transport stations. But generally speaking, they'll all be on the board. But they have told me that, um, they believe our team really has an advantage because they were able to at the outset secure those dumpsters, which they have nothing. So when this is over and we look back, that will be considered. I would, it's a particular moment for us being able to, um, do what we've been interested to do so far.
So, and is there any direct contact between sort of, um, you know, the elected mayors and Republicans or the, or the focus we guys?
Yeah, every call that we've had, Republic's been on the call. You know, we would do an initial meeting, then Republic would join. Um, and we've reached out to the teams that are proud of it. Um, we've even sent in our loan box on how to resolve this. We've been on the phone regularly with the Lieutenant Governor, uh, Tim Driscoll, to let her know what's going on ground, you know, and what, she might be able to do her role to help resolve this.
Is there, I mean, is there anything the council can do to help support that?
I think the biggest thing would be to just keep supporting their records. And I watch them and see them and, and nothing short of the first that they have not given up. Because something like this, I thought Bobby Knox would never say it. He said, this is worse than any snowstorm he's ever worked on. But they've not, they've not given in.
And, I mean, do you have any sense of, I mean, I know we, you know, we're going to go over the finances. Is that a key thing that's holding back for residents? What's your sense of?
It's a combination. But I think we just have to keep supporting our team. We have to keep being in touch with, you know, our residents. I don't think being in touch with, uh, no disrespect to the media, but being in touch with the media is, is going to help anything. We have to work together on this. So that's the biggest thing that the council can do. Like I was telling you, that person on Woodman Street went door to door. Since then, no one's put their stuff up. She took it upon herself to say, hey, I want to help. That's how you do it.
All right, well, I'm done with my questions, so.
So, so let me just continue on talking contracts. I think it's really helping to have a baseline understanding of that side of things. So I cut and paste a couple of sections here to just speak to the key financial terms of our contract. For the, for the current fiscal year, it's truly combined with these two different buckets. We pay $2.15 million for curbside collection, which also includes school dumpsters and includes the square, barrels in the square, the barrels at the car. So, so that, along with the cost per ton for the trash only, of the, the cost that we incur for, uh, you know, for trash pickup, you know, right now. We do not pay, and I mentioned this before, we do not pay any tonnage for the, um, for recycling right now. So that's a, that's definitely very unique, you know, relative to the rest of the market. And I, I would love to know more information on that here. So interesting, this is, uh, and I'll talk a little bit more about.
Can you use hospital one second? Just say, just say, we're just going to take a, a resighting break. All right, we're, we're starting in here. We just have a member of, uh, of the media from WCDB who's going to be filming. And so we're just notifying you, it's going to be a recording meeting, but this meeting's being recorded, which is allowed to happen in this public meeting. So, um, please continue, Ron.
Yeah, so let me, let me just move on to, I, I shared with you sort of our contract, $2.15 million for curbside collection. Again, signed 2011, it's old at this point in time. Um, I, I do have a, a database of 50 somewhat other cities' contracts that, that kind of provides us a frame of reference, which is really an interesting thing to go through. And they, they definitely range depending upon where they, you know, where there was, when they were signed, I should say. A, a lot of the, the dynamics of the particular city, some of the drivers that drive it are road miles and, and tonnage and, um, you know, obviously resident population. So it's, it's really something that is unique city by city. And you look at one, you look at another, and you can try to figure out, um, why one is so much different than the other. But I'll, I'll tell you kind of where I think we're at, just based upon conversations I've had. This is my third, I happen to pull it out. It's, it's definitely, it's a bit of a unique contract, because it has a lot of components. But I do want to point out that the curbside recycling piece is, uh, $5 million for, uh, the current fiscal year. So $5 million to pay to our, you know, $2.1, $2.2 million on the curbside. So, um, you know, again, they've got the big barrels, they've got the big toters, they've got, you know, in a, in a price tag that kind of matches it. I have spoken to, um, I spoke to one company, he's actually the owner of a, of a pretty big firm that does a lot of cities and, and, you know, asked them to kind of look at all of the different dynamics involved in road miles and residents. And I gave them kind of some information on our program. And what it is, when they're in the business, they have a, you know, a pretty good idea of what a rat. And I said, and, 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 you know, his response was that, you know, if they would have put a price on that, again, it's a reputable company that we'd give about $4 million a year for, um, for curbside pickup. So why am I, because they're not plugged in. Are you sorry? That's kind of a problem.
Yes, table. Is there a light on the block? We have one of those tables?
Yeah, this one, this one is plugged in and this one works, Ron.
That on, is that charged?
I'm going to.
The light just turned on.
Did it go on?
Yeah. A little light in the background.
If I die, we'll figure it out.
Um, so, so again, then, but, but just to give you an idea, that Paul talked about where they, they figured that we would be with about, be about $4 million compared to the, because you don't really go to, to, you really try to get some competitive bidding. But what we do think that the, the sort of rumors are true, that the, the number that we have right now is, you know, certainly below market. Uh, this is just a snapshot of where we, uh, stand today in terms of the revenue that's provided versus the expenses. So just, we've probably seen this before, but I'm, I'm resharing it. And, uh, you know, the sort of, in the interest of providing full context to, um, to this topic here today. And again, we'll be able to, be able to reference, you know, if you've seen this before, um.
So Ron, I just want to clarify these numbers since we're joining in a lot of different ways. So what this is showing here is that for this past fiscal year, we, we, we took in about 1.2 million in total revenue from all of our trash bag fees and stickers. And we spent 3.4, uh, on curbside pickup and the disposal, the, the tipping fees of all that. So that's a $2.2 million deficit or subsidy of the current trash cost. And what you then just quoted us is that if we were to go to, out to bid this right now, we wouldn't be surprised if we had an additional $2 million to that cost. So if that were in place today, that would be a $4.2 million difference between what we are bringing and what that cost for the day.
Yeah, the one, can I just add one more thing, say?
Yeah, and then we'll go to Councilman.
So yes, the only thing that would be in addition to the increase in the curbside pickup is we would incur a, a recycling tonnage cost that we don't incur right now. So we've got 4,000 tons of recycling. The market right now is $105 a ton, maybe $110. So you pick up another $400,000 plus on that piece too, when the, maybe we'll pick it up. If it's a, you lose another 400,000. So that's sort of in addition to additional curbside pickup cost, you have, you know, additional, um, disposal costs.
Okay, thank you. Councilor, that is the news, Councilman.
Uh, thank you very much. I just, back when you quoted, uh, something from Bedford's, what they pay, and we, that includes those trucks that stop it, right? Or I think it's, I guess, yes, the what would you say?
The automated.
Yes, is that included in that 5 million, like, um?
Yeah, so the, so the 5 million is the number for the, what I call the curbside pickup number. So that's the trucks that labor to go around and pick up. It's not the disposal cost, right? So whether it's automated, semi-automated, whatever the particular city has, you know, that's their, their cost to go pick all the material up and bring it back to wherever it's going to be brought back to.
Okay, so then the 2 million, um, increase that we think we would get, we would, is that for the same services and barrels we have now?
Yeah, and again, it's a budget number, right? So I think some of, and one of the slides that I have is to speak to the number of different decision points that quite frankly, we would have to actually get a number, right? So, but that is largely the same services that we have today. You know, now, you know, if you were to go to a different.
Yeah.
Yeah, but let's say for example, you were to go away from the, the pageant throw program and go towards what some other communities have, where your tonnage is going to go up. Your, you might need an extra truck on the road because now a truck fills up quicker. So there's different variables, but that's kind of a budget number that a, a, a 40-year industry veteran gave me that owns a company that has 400 trucks on it. So it's a pretty decent place to, to stop, you know?
Councilman.
Sorry, just to wrap that up, that would be something if we as a council wanted to start would be into, those are the public meetings, that we would get all the feedback and that's where we would start talking about everything on the table. Thank you.
Councilman.
Yeah, two things, so, I, we, we've gotten bills, right? That we haven't paid.
Yep.
What is that number? And how much tonnage? Because we're not really effectively using a blue bag, right? How much is that, how much are we looking at right now?
So, so two things, yeah, we, we've asked them for when we shut down that number?
It was shut down. Okay, trust me.
That's not good. So there's, there's, there's a couple of things. One is, we, we've asked for and don't yet have good tonnage numbers for July. Because I'm curious like you, as to what you have spent, once we've done this sort of relaxation. We know we're going to see more tonnage, we just haven't seen it. But that's what I think partially because the, the process of putting that information together for Republicans, they send the trucks to the dump, they weigh them all, then they send reports back, then, right? So they're just, they're behind and, and doing some of their, what do we pay per ton? Uh, so we pay 115 per ton on trash. In fact, they say nothing on recycling. In terms of the bills, and we've got a meeting that the mayor set up the next week with them, you know, we've got some things to work out with them relative to some, there's some contractual language about the salary wage adjustments that they can make, that we've got to, um, to battle a little bit with to figure out how to interpret that. They know that, we've said that they've got to give us some information to back up how they come up with the calculated amount that they're asking for. Until then, um, the controller's office, you know, is sort of holding back on some people. So there's no conflict there though, it's complete open dialogue with them. And I think when we last spoke to them several weeks ago, they were like, we get it, we owe you a bunch of stuff. But right now, we're kind of all, you know, we're kind of all this.
Yeah, and the last thing I would say, just, Councilman, uh, this is really the, the other reason I want to call this meeting was simply because, right, one is, one is, um, we, it's easy to say we can just leave, right? And we, you've said this before in past meetings, Republic would probably let us out of the contract because it's so bad for that, right? The questions we have to ask ourselves and the residents, I'd be prepared to probably double, if not triple, but the expense of getting rid of traction. And that's, that's a discussion, I mean, you look to Melrose, it's 450. I've talked to people in Melrose, they've doubled that like in the last three years. It was 200, 150 and what the 450. So it's not like it's math and it's went on anemic to that, is my point, right? Other communities are failing that, so it's a key decision.
And Councilor's on the heels of us just using 8 million one time.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we could, just for the public's knowledge, it's not that we don't want to do that. We would certainly do it. And you also got to make, you know, look at the fact is, you'd have to go to a union company, right? We don't want to, we, we support all the teams this year, so we don't want to go to a union company. And that, and that's even if they, if companies stand to those RFPs, because they might not want to take that. So there's all these factors that, when you start putting this in there, it's like, can we really move? If we do, are residents going to be happy that we will? Because now we've just tripled the tax, the traction. I'm not saying these are the answers, but this is why we had to get out in this forum to say, this, these are all the moving pieces of this calculation.
Councilman.
Yeah, the only, the only thing I'd say is that there have been some recent communities that have gone back out to the market and have actually saved money on their trash contract. So it's not exactly comparable, but Arlington switched from Republic to another company on July 1st. And they, I believe they saved over a million dollars. Uh, and the reason being is that they are utilizing the, the, the automatic lifting into the, into the truck. Uh, as Mr. Hogan has, has, has indicated, Malden has some tighter areas than other communities that, that use that. But there are potential where on some routes in Malden, where we could do more of an automated lifting that might actually save us some, uh, money. It's not clear, and I, and I, and I trust the administration is, is taking this into consideration, but we did look at it extensively, uh, in 2021, it just did not work. And looking back, I don't think we would change a thing regarding that. Just too many variables. Uh, and the other thing about, um, doing something now, again, six years remaining, we've got to be very, very careful here on doing anything that might put us in a worse position than we already got. We have to, I think, our team believes we just have to get through this first before determining our next steps.
I put together this slide really to give you just a flavor of the number of topics for discussion we would consider further. It's now and three years from now, these are the type of things that you have to sort of dig into. And one of those, one you just brought up, right? They spoke to the owner of this company and he said, yeah, in some cities it saves money and some cities it costs money because the driver's getting out of the truck so often in the road to adjust barrels. They have to split it into routes that are automated and not automated based upon the street. So all good. They have to split it into routes that are automated and not automated based upon the street. So all good discussion, but, but all things that really require sort of time and engagement to be able to fully speak to as opposed to kind of rushing into it. You know, just a small thing, um, I've, I've got a note here about sort of trash and recycling drop off location, right? So that means a lot to the company you're working with because we may get a better price to drop off over at Wheel of Brigh, right? They may give us the best price. But if the trash company's waiting in line two hours over there to be able to drop off, what we're saving, they're spending, right? So they want to know in the contract where you're dropping off, they would rather us drop off in Danvers and pay $5 extra a ton because they're not waiting in line. So you have to kind of figure out, uh, what we saving is what we're saving on the drop off piece, you know, sort of offset by folks just sitting and, and outside of it. So it's a process to go through with a lot of different discussion points and, and decision points in order to be able, in order to be able to figure out what you would want to do, even if the contracts were out right now, right? And, you know, sort of notwithstanding the other financial challenges. And that's why we've always said, when you start going through sort of the other city contracts and this whole topic, you kind of realize how deep it is, right? You know, and, and you realize how much effort it would really be to sort of engage this, right? And, and so on that front, there are some great resources out there, right? The, the state's got a website, this is a, a clickable link that we'll share, um, that talks about these best practices that the DCP has, has published. Um, there's a, there's a whole KP Law Contracting Guide for Municipal Solid Waste. And there's several other links with templates for RFPs and for contracts that, that really are informative as you start thinking about, you know, sort of where we're at, where we're going, whether it's today, tomorrow, or from a D and E perspective, a city of our size, and given the complexity of what trash has been involved in, they think you should stop that process two years ahead of time. They would have to be able to, to kind of go through the right engagement process. So it is kind of interesting to go through and really get informed on some of those different decision points to realize all the different things are at play and, and sort of how difficult it would be to make a change on the fly. And then my fear is, my nightmare is you do that, right? You go, okay, everyone's happy. The next day you wake up and it goes, break's over. And then all of a sudden, you know, Bobby's getting tired and fat, you say, we used him. So, um, you know, it's, it's really the challenge of trying to figure out what the future holds when you really don't know. So, but those are really great resources. As I said before, I've got a database of contracts and RFPs that.
Just a question before, before you go on to this, Ron, if I can ask, have you looked at the, if, whether there's any difference in experience between cities and councils that have taken this in-house, they're doing it in-house with their own staff and just paying the ton, you know, just paying the disposal fees? I know some of our local cities and towns do their own trash pickup. I understand you got to buy trucks. Um, or find a way to get your hand on the truck. But have we looked at the different experience? Obviously, a big part of the problem right now is that we don't have the authority to tell Republic to do anything and our leverage is limited because it's an under-market contract. Um, so we're at an arm's length for this. That would be different, obviously, you know, if we're not contracted, so.
I don't know, Dana, Bobby, who do you know substance around us of any size or scale that's doing it in-house?
Nobody. I mean, years ago before, I bet you it's 30, they did it.
I get Bobby paid.
Yeah, you gave multiple trucks all the way before you're talking. Back in the day, it was a driver and two helpers on each truck. So a figure five trucks, we have nowhere to put them, first of all. Three, three employees on each truck, that's another 15 employees, 15 more pensions and benefits. And so when you add all the, all the numbers up, yeah, it's one of the, the most, uh, injury prone jobs that, that are out there is, is on the trash truck. So they got rid of it years ago, probably before most people here, I mean, realized that we did do it in-house. And I, and I can't ever see going back to something like that, doing it in-house, what, what you would need to do it.
Does Counselor Connaught, do you remember?
It's called the world.
See?
No, it's not. Really, it might be a little.
So that, I understand that's a, that's a no, that we're not, that's not.
I don't know that there's anybody that we've seen that's of our size that has gone down like that. I think part of it is because you need a level of redundancy to be able to deal with the unknown, right? So, so right now, even if we have five trucks and two folks in each truck and it's 10 people on a given day, you need some folks in reserves for, you know, her, vacation, and the truck breaks down and whatnot. So, you need some, need some scale and what to be able to, to eliminate something uncertainty that happens. And I just think that that's where the efficiency comes in is when they pull it all together and they have 400 trucks, that's how you're able to, to do it. Like if you look at capital, capital does revere in Everett. They do revere in the morning and every afternoon with the same trucks, right? So they, they're, that's how you get kind of the efficiencies. So I, I don't know that it'd be any more, you can control your own destiny, but I don't know that it'd be any more efficient.
Counselor? Yeah, it's been a long time having to work along the Malden River, I mean, that where Mel and Bank are, you know, that building, that was, used to be the Everett landfill. And, and Rivers Edge, they used to bring in barges and just dump this stuff on barges and burn it out in the harbor. So a little different when maybe it was the cities just doing it because you were just dumping it here somewhere. So it's a lot different where, you know, it has to go to transfer stations or, you know, the, the incinerator in Sogus or wherever. So it's, it's a lot different business. And, and I know having worked at DP, I mean, I, I, when I was working at DP in the 90s, they were trying to permit another landfill. And Massachusetts has not permitted another solid waste landfill since the 90s. And, um, you know, so the trash has happened to go to New York and stuff like that. So it's just more and more expensive. And it's, and there used to be some landfills out in Springfield, those have built up and, you know, sometimes, at some point, I mean, the incinerator in Sogus is going to get exposed to their, um, landfill. So it's just, we're in this behind. It's, uh, you know, having a below-market contract is, is a great thing, but it's, the reality is it's going to be, in time, it is going to be even more. So it's, that is our, our thing.
So I guess, let me, let me just end and sort of take any questions with this. Certainly, we, we literally, you know, I, I don't know, Bobby, how many times have we spoken last month? It's probably 20 times a day. I'm tired of it. Uh, but we're in contact with Republic literally daily. We, we do hope, we do hope there's a chance that a strength that just settled in California provides the ability for them to pull in some more resources and we can, you know, we can kind of ramp up again. We obviously ultimately hope that the discussion today and tomorrow leads to agreement and the folks can get back to work and then everything is back to where it should be. But, you know, in the meantime, we're going to continue to try to look for options, to try to have a backup plan to drop off, try to expand those. And the moment that we think we can reopen curbside recycling and make meaningful progress and not frustrate people with false hope, and that's absolutely our intention to do. And we don't think that that's, that's off the table for something that might happen soon. We just don't know exactly when that's going to be, but we're, we're working this every day.
Uh, Counselor Beth, right?
Two quick things. I just, hopefully you get a, and I'm not just pointing the man, but from, you know, we get that, that, that position filled for trash enforcement, right? That's one of the people that fix the ordinance so that Nelson's team has, because it's going to relook, we got to fix that so it allows more people to help with the tickets. Because again, I don't want to just focus on that. I want to look at the future, uh, in terms of enforcement, it gets key to everything we talked about, road, exploring life, asking landlords, all that stuff, right? Um, just the site lead area. And the second thing I would say is unfortunately, I've read more trash city rules in the last two weeks than anything. Uh, we are going to have to deal with it, like Ron said, uh, the state guideline that says 24 months. Uh, I, I stumbled upon, I showed a couple councils, they go to Chelsea's, Chelsea does not charge owner occupied units. They charge everybody else high fees, but owner occupied is free trash pickup. So they take that burden, they shift it. And it's pretty interesting how they do it, to take it with that ordinance. Uh, not that we're trying to talk about it now, but I think we should be looking at it for the next, you know, couple of years as a one process.
Counselor Lenzel?
Yeah, I mean, I just, I think, uh, you know, if there's, you know, particularly on the prevailing wage stuff, I mean, do we think that, like, let's say the strike gets settled in the next week or two, that will Republic be coming back to that incentive? They will be.
Oh, yeah.
Anticipate that we might be, they enhance revenue there for, for this fiscal year.
Well, there'll be enhanced, there'll be enhanced costs depending upon, so, so there's a prevailing wage clause in the contract, you know, like, like, you know, JRM never, um, never, actually never exists, right? So it's the ability to sort of change the amount each year based upon change of the general wage rate. But it's written vaguely enough that we have to put our heads together on how we're going to interpret that. But there's no, there is actually nothing, um, that connects that to sort of any services involved in the, we'll sit down and we're going to have that meeting next week and we'll, we'll put our heads together and we will find some common ground. As I'm comfortable with this, that's what we do, right? So we'll get there and it's the moment the strike's over, you know, they've been, you know, they've been as responsive as they can be in a, in a, you know, in a sort of bad situation. And, you know, we've expressed our frustration with them not being at, you know, at the table. And so hopefully we see some.
Are they raising anything else specific to Malden where they anticipate any other financial impacts or operational impacts? Is that something, anything to be involved in that they're raising that they might, you know, we renegotiated in 2021, or do we need to renegotiate for 2026? Is that something?
We have to work with them, Counselor, on, on, um, tonnage fees for trash, right? So again, some cities like Revere has a correct contract with Wheel of Brigh. So they've got their own contract, the company they hired to pick up curbside brings it over, then Wheel of Brigh develops them and it's two different relationships with us. It's always been a pass rule. Um, I would say that we've got some issues with Republicans, uh, request they may to increase that amount. And we're going to, we're going to figure out whether or not we can land on a number we're comfortable with or whether or not we need to go down that path. So that's a, that's all about the conversation we have with them.
All right.
Other colleagues, fine? So, yeah, I mean, this is kind, this is a, a lot of information, which was fantastic. So just sort of the, of the trash, of the recyclable that's all out there. And I know as you talked about the communication and using aerial, one of the things I was thinking is like, is there a way that even counselors or someone from Malden needs helping me, some of those groups that not take, but not yet, not yet. The, um, you know, and help, because it's trying to, I've been trying to talk to neighbors, like the woman on Whitney Street. Is there almost something that as I'm walking, I get stick it on the trash, recycling, you know, just to explain some of the things, how to sign up for the QR code? With the QR code, at least, as you walk and you see it all, if you're sat doing that, because it is not the onus usually that's out there. And then if you have, you know, communication issues, it's really difficult, but I was just thinking you could stick them on there.
I've actually done that. I've actually done that. And are you guys doing those little, um, pamphlets again? Should we still have them?
I'll be kidding. We had them done at the very beginning. By the time they were printed, the location changed. And by the time they were printed a second time, we had to adjust the days and the hours. So it's been a bit of a moving target, right? And so.
But even if it's just like.
You gotta take it.
Curbside recycling, you have to take it in, and this is a QR code you can look up.
Well, that's what I was thinking, a QR code and we have a website. We even have some translations on the website. Cause I think the flyer, not only did it get out of date, but the thing, the reason I didn't hand it out, I was going door to door too, just to help people. That flyer said, please have this translated. And I, I just, that's like a pet peeve of mine. I hate when things say, put the burden on other people to translate it. I'd love it if it went to a website where we actually did translate, um, because I think people know how to use that. A QR code's very self-explanatory.
Yeah, no, and we definitely, Counsel, we, we, we definitely need more step up in language access on this. I think we all shared that frustration that it, with the tools that are out there, with the electronic options to, to change things have been great, but we need, you know, we have the benefit of a resource, we need to do more with that.
There's, there's, yeah. No. Things to do.
It's exactly what it was. It was like.
Exactly. It's on the recycle, not on the doors.
So like, we thought about getting out there with ones that say recycling's paused. I can guarantee you the volume will start dropping. Those are going to get the volume up as great as we've got three trucks. I, maybe that's the way to do it, right? Your recycling sticker.
We're going to get something so I can start.
Yeah. We'll come up with something that isn't going to get dated and, you know.
Yeah, yeah, just hold on, hold on. Strangy the cross talk, however, they can't hear online if we do that. So please, Counselor.
No, no, I just, sort of something that is like sort of easy, that a lot of people could kind of participate in, like see people to help people bring the recycling down, but the name is no, but just.
We do rely upon, I know you mentioned, I know Counselor mentioned, like, we do rely upon people using the Google Translate tool on the website, same thing the state uses, right? The state website has an entire page that speaks to sort of how to be able to use technology to be able to convert, you know, the website and, so rather than, you know, updating things and translating, then they're out of data an hour later, you know, we, we do follow the state model of using the technology and trying to get folks to point towards it to be able to, you know, to translate from there. So that, that way as we're creating stuff, like, like the mayor is really careful in the mayor's office to, to try to avoid things that are graphics because they don't, you know, translate, right? So that as much as the text isn't always the most exciting thing, it translates.
Right, so is the truth.
Uh, Counselor, are you done, Counselor? Yes, Counselor.
Thank you. Um, Ron, I do think that that is a really great idea. Cause a couple of weeks into this strike, I was noticing some areas in Woody anyway, that, you know, the people were not doing nothing. I called Ron to see if maybe we needed to, you know, get in touch with the schools. And he told me about the, the database that we actually pay for, and it's not just people that sign up for those alerts. And I actually think it worked, like I called Nelson, Gia dropped off a, I don't know how many of those little tags. Me and my sister-in-law went around, you know, just walking Woody in the areas that looked the worst, you know? And we just put them on the doors, we talked to a few people, and I actually saw a difference. People actually brought their stuff in once, once they have a little pamphlet. But maybe we can, you know, because right before that I had to wait for them because the, the location changed. And Gia and Nancy upstairs were literally sitting there printing labels and sticking labels on the pamphlets we had already previously purchased, but they didn't go to waste. Which is, you know, a little crazy, but I, I do think that, you know, the couple of afternoons that I spent, the, the couple of weeks after that, it really was effective, you know? And as much as every, you know, everybody I talked to, I need you to tell your neighbor, to tell your neighbor, to tell your neighbor, but there's just some people that are like, yeah, no, it's, it's staying there. I, I take the trash recycling and it's staying there until the trash recycling gets picked up. And it, it's, it's pretty sad to, that, you know, we've come down to that because I take pride in the way that the front of my house looks, my neighbors take pride in the way theirs. It's just some of these people that, you know, just don't care. The thing that's frustrating me these days is the, um, shop and shop brown bags that are now 25 deep on the side of a recycling tote. Because they can't fit it in the recycling tote anymore. So they're now just put in little brown shop and shop bags.
Which is against.
Which is getting absolutely critical. If you drive down East and Out or whatever, so I hope that a lot of my residents will use the, the new, uh, nine to five tomorrow because I did see quite a few of them, you know, saying, well, Linden is on the other side of the city. You know, for some reason, everyone thinks Woody is the forgotten part of the city. I, I don't think so. I love Woody and I would never forget about Woody, but there are a lot of people that do think that we are forgotten. And I, I think, I appreciate it being the first on your list. And hopefully you won't.
At your request, Counselor. No, we, we do intend to go, like I said, as many days as we can. Next week we'll rotate them around, like I said.
Is that going to be a daily thing? Like a, a truck?
Yeah, every day, you know, like, because we have Middlesex and we may try to balance it off with that. And if we do every day and we get a vehicle every day and people, then we'll do that to, you know, it's a, it's a good option because at the end of the day, it's gone. I will say this, right, Cruz survived in Middlesex. You had 11 dumpsters on Tuesday morning, they were gone by 5:00 in the night. Nothing was open night. And part of that was out of concern for, you know, sort of the rodents and what have you. So he's figured out a logistics situation with the company where they're, they're brought in at 5:00 in the morning and they're gone at 5:00 at night, which was not an easy thing to pull off, but at least the illegal dumping and the rodents is something that hopefully doesn't.
Listen, and, and one other thing, as worse as everyone thinks that we are, I have family in Linfield, Peabody, Gloucester, Swansted. We're one of the only cities and towns that are actually, people are looking at us saying how great we've handled this. Swansted, they're not getting anything picked up. Gloucester, very minimal. Uh, Linfield, Linfield's a little bit different of an animal. It's not as dense as Malden. They only have one truck a day, every day. It seems, if one guy does the whole town. So they're on a little different level, but I think that, you know, Bobby, Ron, the team that we've had, they really have done amazing. Even though in certain areas it doesn't look like it, but I think those areas are always areas that don't look like it, unfortunately, like Wild Park Street, and you award every time I drive by, I cringe, but I drive by, I cringe when, when not in a trash strike. And I think, Ron, I think it was the week after that I called you and said, if this strike, a week into it, has, is going to teach us anything, it's that we sink at enforcement. Because you go to Revere, you go to Everett, if they lit it up, $25 fines. We, once this is over and we're beyond this, we need to make sure that the enforcement piece, it is crucial. You have to have a bag and a barrel. If we had that from the beginning, I think we might have been a little bit better off. Once this, um, strike started, maybe not now, two months into it, but even at the, one week into this, it looks like a disaster. So if we had only, you know, I know we were trying to be lenient because people were upset at the size of the barrels and the recycling bins and all that other stuff. But I, I don't think we should be like that moving forward once this is passed. So I think your lid's open, you gotta, you're gonna get a fine. Your bag's not in a barrel, you're gonna get a fine. And it doesn't have to be a city of Malden back, I mean, um, barrel or a recycling bin. You just got to have a cover. Because on those crazy days, like we, we probably wouldn't have as much of a rodent problem that we're having right now if we actually had the proper enforcement going into this strike.
I, I think to your point, like this has really shown where.
The areas of.
The areas that we need to improve on.
We can do the cross talk. Counselor Seager, are you there?
Sorry, I am, I'm good.
All right, Counselor T.
Sorry, I just agree with Counselor Seager that this really has shown the areas that we need improving. the areas that we need improvement and what we can be doing in general. You know, there was almost no trash in barrels on Malden Street. Like, there were some barrels out, but multiple, multiple bags on the street, which is common even without the strike and-
Which is the lead.
Which is, right, which we have ordinances, we should be enforcing them. I'm also happy to be deputized. You know, because I think that's important. It makes everybody feel like they're, we're in this together and, you know.
Counselor Lanning, end.
Couple of parting thoughts. I wanted to just offer the suggestion as we make this simple flyer that we put a reminder for how to sign up for updates on it. Yes. One thing I noticed when I was going door to door, and it was a very common theme, that most of the people that had good intentions and just didn't realize that there was a strike or that they were doing the wrong thing, they didn't know they could sign up for alerts. So I was helping a lot of people figure out how to do that, go to the right site. So we can put that link, I think that would be a great thing. The other concern I wanted to elevate that a lot of people were asking me about is what we're going to do about yard waste. I know that really depends if we, you know, if they're at the table now and they come to a resolution, which not come what I hope is what happens really soon. And that's a different conversation than if we're still talking about this in a month. But I think a lot of people have had their yard waste out, hoping that it's going to be resolved soon. Some of it's wet, some of it's got, you know, all kinds of rodents and whatever happening in it. I think there's issues with the yard waste. It's going to make it challenging for people to just be able to pick it up and drop it off somewhere, if that's what we're going to maybe propose. So that's something I just want us to be thinking about because I think that could be particularly challenging for us. So just wanted to make that.
Well, we do have the yard waste drop off at the DPW, which used to be, for five hours on the side, we'd increase that to eight-hour drop off. I know it's not perfect for everybody, but it is. Right now, it's grass clippings. Hopefully, this gets resolved before the leaves start falling. It's really heavy out there. But, you know, we do have the drop off option for it. Unfortunately, we can't utilize having a truck go up there and pick up closer because that would take away from the trash pickup. And that's been our priority from the beginning.
Yeah. I do think we might find that some folks can't do that if they've got a high quantity. So I just wanted to flag that as we might be finding ourselves having to come up. I don't know what that solution is, but I'm already hearing from residents that are saying, I know I'm not going to be able to get it. I've got so much or it's so heavy because it's been sitting and it's wet or waterlogged or whatever. The last thing I did, just want to remind folks, because I do feel like I'm getting a lot of questions about if we still have to use the blue bags. And since it's being recorded and folks might be watching it later, it's still true that we don't have to do that, right?
It is. And the reason for that is a couple of them. One is, again, we're bringing in resources that are coming and going for Republicans from different groups that quite frankly, need as few things to worry about as possible. Two is, we're also mindful of the fact that sometimes somebody puts something out that started as recycling and three weeks later is contaminated and now it needs to be thrown out as trash. And so what we don't want to do is burden that person by having to purchase a, you know, blue bag to get rid of what's something that was put out as sort of with good faith as recycling. So it will be that, well, you know, some folks are using it as an opportunity to get rid of some things and that's okay. Well, it's an additional tonnage. One of the questions we've gotten is, well, so I have a tag, I didn't benefit from that. Are we doing a refund? We're not, we're not keeping track of who put up war and, you know, sort of, took, I don't want to say if it could be in a bad way, but benefited from the no blue bag and we're not keeping track of any of that. So if you have a tag and you decided to clean out some stuff and put it out without a blue bag, that's, you know, some folks are using it and some aren't. And we just don't have a way to go citywide and say, you had a tag, but you put out three extra bags in a black bag, so you don't get a credit. You, we just kind of, we're going to keep doing it the way we're doing it until we feel like we can go back to the old system because we have crews that are ready for this system.
Yeah, understood. Thank you. Come on, Seth.
Any else?
All right, well, just a couple of final comments from the chair. Thank you, everybody, for a really helpful meeting. I think we got a lot of good information out there. We encourage anyone who's watching this to continue to be in touch with your, like, representatives of the city. A couple of things I just wanted to highlight. One is that, you know, I really encourage those who can and want you to sign up for our curbside compost pickup, which is entirely separate company. It is, you do have to pay for it. It's $17 a month for weekly curbside pickup of your compost. And I would tell you, I cut my trash in half when I signed up for it. The barrels, the little bins locked so that they are not a rodent problem. They're actually helping with the rodent problem because it gets some of the rostered things out of the trash and gets them in a locked bin. So I really encourage folks to do that. There's a good chunk of waste that actually is food waste. And so the more we can do that, the more it can bring down our tonnage. So blackearthcompost.com, sign up. That's the company that we have an agreement with, the city.
There's a lesser cost option as well.
That's right. You can do every other week pickup for $14 a month.
I think it's actually down to 11 now.
Oh, is it?
Yep.
See, the more we get, the lower the cost is.
We're totally lucky for you.
And you can put, they take a lot of things, more than you can do in your own home composting, like meat and bones.